Ontario Lee saying this, these are the standards we want to hold ourselves to. So um those can belong. Those can either be absent or non-existent, if you like. Those can exist in a totally separate policy, or they can exist here all under one. Umbrella policy, called policies and procedures, which would include not only the uh way in which you govern and run your meetings, but any other uh policy or procedure that the council would. Which is what we're uh what we've kind of been working off of now. But yeah, if if the desire is to say, we just, we just want rules to govern our meetings and and nothing else, you certainly can do that. That would be compliant with.
I I would prefer if we if we um. Review them, look at where we're at with it and go from there. Because I think there's a, there's a balance between the two that we can come up with. It's it's already been reviewed by our attorney, so why would it be there some march?
Well, I'll say the, your existing policy uh was reviewed uh. Pretty well in depth in twenty-one. In twenty-three, it was sent over. You you had almost no changes in in the policy in twenty-three. This is a. Total, this is, we've basically blown up and start all over. Um, a lot of the things in here are familiar, but. Uh, just the organization of the document, everything is is, it's new, the way that it looks, the content is um, a lot of it's the same, some of it's different. So this is not, this has not had legal review yet. Just wanted to be clear on that.
I, well, obviously, before we adopt anything, we're gonna have our legal counsel look at it. And if they have a concern, maybe then they can bring that up.
Yeah, so for example, um, I don't, uh, we we can go through this off the hook, but I know LOC has a. In here, they they have generally like a, I, in the cou- couple spots, you mentioned the fifteen minute rule, mayor. Uh, they had like a two hour uh limitation in there as well, so. It's not that there isn't one that exists, there's just different. And so um, the reminder on why ours was fifteen minutes, uh, I mean, that was originally actually adopted in the nineteen. Rules uh was um, which was the first time council had adopted rules. Um, is that there were, at the time, there were council members that were calling uh the attorney often, frequently and often, and. Then we were getting invoiced for it, and it was a surprise to staff and surprise to everybody else, but yet there are services that were occurring and being billed. And so. Costs were being run up uh by legal fees without any sort of check into that. And so. Um, I do agree with you, fifty minutes is pretty restrictive. The pendulum is, at that time in nineteen swung really far that way. And so I think there's a good opportunity here for discussion as you work through it here. This is that, uh, do you want to keep that? Do you want to expand it? Do you want to follow these two hour sort of guidelines, or is there something else? Something, but if there's others that are there, I think that's certainly worth discussing.
Well, and I only come from a place because I remember those days when the. We had several counselors that were continuously calling attorneys and we needed to kind of get a uh more of a. A concise look on it, so um, and everything that we've had from then on has been reviewed by attorneys and it's been okay, so. I I don't know.
Yeah, so they they're your policies and procedures, so it's 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 the rules that you guys want to govern yourselves by. Uh, and then when legal reviews, um, the idea there is that if this is what you've. At as a general consensus is, yeah, this is how we want to govern ourselves. They're gonna review it to make sure that we're compliant with. Constitution, state's ORS statutes, with the charter, with the adopted codes, those kinds of things, to make sure that we're in compliance with that.
It's my understanding that the, if we say you cannot contact, then that would create a problem. It's. When you could put a time limit on things, I don't think having access is different than quantifying how long you speak to that person.
And just for historical content, because I do have seniority over Dave. It was, when Dave came on board, it was very obvious that it was more or less lawless with our council. We had. Council and mayors that would uh more or less go above our city manager and was directing staff to do things. Was directing attorneys to do things. And the the code and our charter were not being followed. We were supposed to have these rules in place. Long before even I showed them, and we did not have them. So this was a way for uh Dave to be able to mitigate that situation and to be able to. More or less take control of what staff and how our our attorney fees were being spent. And it helped create clear guidelines between expectations from the council and expectation of staff. Um, because we had, we had counselors in here, Nancy, I need you to do this, Melissa, I need you to do that. And it wasn't fair to us that they were going. Uh, we we still have to respect them, right? It put us in an awkward position to where we have an elected official telling us something. That is very different from what our supervisor was telling us. So these, these council rules help establish. Procedures and policies, not not only for you to follow, but to keep us, the employees, safe.
To to build off of that a bit. Thank you very much. And we think just to to build off of that, and going back to the the general initial question of. Why don't we just adopt the LOC's model rules and call it good? Um, even if you were to decide to just use the LOC's. Auto rules, we would still want to review that against your charter and your ordinances to internalize because of the. Yeah, um, but above and beyond that, um, I mean, one of the reasons to have rules and one of the reasons to think about. Uh, having rules that are specific, taking the LOC's model rules and then specifically tailoring that to the needs of your particular city. It's a lot of what Nancy was saying, that um, some of the situations that may come up, they um are going to help you with good governance. Or things that may only come up once a year, they come up once every three years, once every five years. And if you have thought, if you have taken a careful look at thinking about. When that type of situation comes up and in our city council's context, and this is how we want to do it, and we have that documented. That is going to provide for consistency in the way in which you address those situations from, you know. The first, second, third time it comes up, even if it's only coming up once every five years. And so it 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 can make a very big difference. And just remembering that the League of Oregon, Oregon cities. Their model procedures, they provide a very good base. It is, that's reviewed by their legal council. Uh, they're they're exceptionally um useful starting point. But they're purposefully drafted to be a base, right? They're a model that you can then use and tailor to your individual circumstances. And the needs of your city, and think about the fact that LOC is writing that model for cities of every different shape and size throughout the state of Oregon. Um, and so. By virtue of that, it's not gonna address.
Thank you.
Here you go, Bruce, I'll give you another.
So in the, in the scope of um standard review. For something identified like um, you know, contact legal advice. Would it be, would it be a reasonable request to add to the review? Or, you know, some look at what standard practice is in other communities?
Oh, sure.
And bring that back, uh, you know, it. I can't talk to anybody for fifteen minutes and accomplish anything.
No, I, I agree, it's a highly restrictive rule, but when we created this in nineteen, that was the, that 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 specific one in there was put fifteen minutes down.
And when you have the historic content, it's absolute.
Yeah.
Um, I I just wonder if it would be reasonable to say, hey, we, maybe we could get a recommendation out of this along with the review.
And please understand, the my only reason for saying that is, isn't the fact that. I just want us to understand that we're, we're, we won't be in trouble if we say it's fifteen minutes. That's kind of what I'm getting at. It's the, it's the ability to have access, that's the point. Um, it's my understanding, if you deny somebody access to something, then that creates a bigger problem. It's. It's us honing into how mu- how much they can have, because I remember having those specific conversations with our attorney at the time. What was the guy's name out of?
No, we had uh Philip Spicer Coon. You do have the lounge chair. Alright, um. I'm not sure, I I'm happy to try to lead the discussion here, if you'd like. We can have Marine do that, if you'd like, or Nancy do that, if like, um, it's really up, or we got Mayor do that, if you'd like. It's really up to you. This is not necessarily meant to be a staff presentation, it's more of a, again, a workshop. And I'm putting it up here on the board, I'm happy to be. Uh, scribe here, um, and if we need to make any adjustments here, we could, or if we like it as is, we can go from there, then I just sort of highlight the color. I know, uh.
Is it state law or something?
It just says, either time they are reasonable, yeah.
What's something? What would be something reasonable for you?
We've been getting minutes out within two weeks. You guys, at every council meeting, minutes have been. They've been, yeah, that's fine.
I I don't know that we want to narrow it down to no matter, only because um, if there's nothing written that's gonna tire our hands, why should we? Well, I guess that's true too. Well, if what if something came up and moved in, you know, then it would get us in trouble.
Correct.
It says only shall be approved in nineteen days, and we have them posted, posted in nineteen days as well.
So your current policies and procedures outline that the staff is required to post the draft minutes online in two weeks of the meeting. And that was, and that was certainly fit within the state law for what is a reasonable timeline for posting them quickly, so. And so just, so that I understand kind of um. Order of operations, it sounds like what we've decided to do is just start at two or six in the forward, so we're starting one or two months.
Yes, yes, thank you.
So just a question, because there's only one of me, and you guys see how things happen when I'm not here. What if I decide to take vacation and I can't meet that two-week deadline? What are the repercussions after that?
You can't.
Can there be an exception for things?
Well, it says, I mean, we are, this is, we're right here, we're saying it's to the city recorder, um, and. And I even believe, I have to go look back into our. Ordinances, I'm pretty sure that they're, they're to be maintained by the city reporter, so. So city, city recorders are also in the ORS and have specific uh. Parliamentary procedures and things like that associated with them specifically, oftentimes uh. Really small towns, a city recorder is also a city administrator, um, and we have some specific stuff there, so. Um, you know. The two weeks, I think, is good. I I I do think that there needs to be something in here that talks about. She goes to a training, she takes vacation, she's sick, um, or I'm, because it could happen at the same time too. I plan all my va- my vacations are all planned upon your guys' schedules. I've missed in the s- almost seven, six and a half years I've been here, I've missed, I think. Two city council meetings, and one of them um was, uh, was when my dad died, and the other one uh was when I had surgery. I even planned my surgery to be when you guys weren't out, and so that I could be on medical leave, so I missed, I think, two.
That's true.
Is that too broad, though?
The other option that you could do, based on this conversation, you can say within two weeks or um other reasonable timeline.
Yeah.
Um.
I think you could, right, that's what I was getting at, is that you say, every, every effort should be made for these votes to be made within two weeks. And then we sort of concede that there may be circumstantial situations in which it may be longer, or or as reasonably possible, so I think. That way, it's, it, then we, if we have an issue where it's longer than two weeks, we can say, what's going on? Why is this constantly, because it shouldn't be consistently, right? It should be one-off, once or twice a year, it took three weeks because of these word situations, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the statute requires that it needs to be available, quote, available to the public within a reasonable time after the meeting. Um, and so I think we can quote that same language, say, within two weeks or other reasonable time.
Alright.
Do we need the two weeks then? Or we just keep with the reasonable time?
The one nice thing about two weeks is that it at least gives slightly more.
Milestones are good. So all minutes shall be approved. And sometimes, sometimes our minutes, sometimes we have a fifth Tuesday, so we end up with it's three weeks, and so it's not approved. Um. So I think what we should put here is all minutes shall be approved at the next council meeting, or. Otherwise reasonably. Possible, or something like that. Because a k- uh, three times a year, it's gonna be three weeks because of that fifth Tuesday. Alright.
I think it makes sense to, you know, stay as close to those, the existing date. Windows and then sticking the ORC laws in for, you know, other. Other extinguishing circumstances.
I have, all minutes shall be approved at the next scheduled regular council meeting, because you have a workshop now, we should have had the next one, right? So we're gonna make sure it's a regular meeting, if there's a next regularly scheduled council meeting, or within an otherwise reasonably established. And then that's when we get into the consequences of, if you guys are having issues with either me or Nancy or whatever, I'm gonna do these things posted, we can have those conversations. Alright.
Um.
What would the established timeframe be, that sounds?
So I guess really established timeframe would be the regular session?
Yeah, those are the ones that we, that we vote well in the beginning of the year, those, that's the established time.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Can we say? Regular, can we say regular established meeting timeframe?
Well, I guess for me, I was looking, uh, because this is a staff um output, it was more on. We may have circumstances in which that might be delayed, and so that's, that's the where I was getting at here, and so. Or as resources allow, or?
Um, I'm just quoting the statute, within a reasonable time after the meeting.
Yeah, I think we say within a reasonable timeframe.
Yeah, I don't like the word established, because it sounds like there is a set.
Yes, it's like there is.
And then we'd be like, what is the established timeframe?
Within a reasonable timeframe.
Yeah, that sounds fair.
Now, that's sub A is specifically about approval. Um, and I believe where we started this conversation was about the posting.
Yeah.
So we're gonna need to, if you want to.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Posting requirement, then you're gonna need to add probably a new sub A. To say that all draft minutes shall be. Posted online within two weeks. After the meeting. That would align with your existing rules. I could not see anything else in the. This section that needed to be adjusted to align with your charter or code.
That's how I know I'm done.
Yeah.
It's the wrong color blue, but it'll be fine for now.
Yes. And I'll just note that the provisions as they're drafted here, um, I think are actually. Uh, quite a bit more clearer than what's in your existing rules, so I would just feel that's to be a very good.
Alright. This is more of our own documentation than, that's the wrong color green, but it's okay. This is the ru- this is gray, but it'll be alright. Thank you, alright. So on your appointments. Um. The only thing that the time, that the charter says is that the appointment of the city manager position, all the positions um. Are not appointed positions. Um, so I'm not sure, I mean, that's what it says here, identify the city charter, I'm not sure if there's anything else you would like to add or.
Yeah, the city charter provides for both the appointment of the city manager and the municipal judge. Um, and so that was the one thing that.
I never considered the judge, I mean.
Yeah.
And she's acting as a clerk, she's our employee, but when she's in here, we're just, that's your, that's your kingdom, we don't come in there.
Which, which is appropriate, and that was the um, the one thing that I highlighted, and I've been kind of looking at this, is that. There should probably be some modifications to to clarify, for example, the. League of Oregon cities basis provides that any person appointed by the council shall be subject to an annual review. But I'm not under the impression that you do an annual review for the municipal, I don't know if you do an annual review for the municipal judge. Um, that's not provided for in your code or in your code or charter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we probably want to clarify. Uh, clarify that here, if you want to.
We do an annual performance uh review for the judge as the court clerk, but not as the judge. Because she does clerk duties as well. We have a full-time municipal cu- uh court clerk now. Um, and so she gets a, and a court evaluation also, but with uh, our judge is now retired and part-time, and we do not. We, none of us do a review of her being the judge, I don't even know how you would do that.
I don't know how you, how you would judge a judge.
I mean, maybe, yeah. Yeah.
I think it goes by, there's any, like, obviously, if she does something outside of her scope, you know. She's held to a different standard than we are.
Yeah.
Because they have to go by the bar and they have, right?
Not the bar, so.
It's the.
Municipal judges be- need to pass the judge test.
Right.
To be a judge and then be appointed, and they're not a member of the bar.
Oh.
Um, and she's not a justice of the peace, so she's not elected either, so.
You kind of integrate.
Yep.
Hmm.
Most municipalities are that.
Kind of looking bad.
What's that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yep. Uh, we just pay the clerk fee, yeah. Yeah, we've never had that before.
How would you review judges?
I agree.
Hey, that road's not regulation.
No, no, no. So I mean, we do, like I said, we do the review, sort of as the clerk duty.
Yeah.
But we, we do not. We do not review sort of, I guess, performance in the court.
It would be the oversight for the judge.
You, you, you don't even have the authority to overturn her, her rulings, so.
No.
Don't we have?
Well, but this is the, again, getting, getting back to. Some of the reasons why it's good, it's it's good to develop your own rules based on the League of Oregon cities, so this is the. Base template from the League of Oregon cities, but different cities have different appointments.
Like the city of Florence is a justice of the peace, which is elected, and so um, so yeah, they're all very good. Um.
Oh, I was just wondering the same thing.
You can, I mean.
I'm sure.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. Not, 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 no oversight in the court, they're appointed, just like I'm appointed, so you can, you can rescind the appointment. By a majority vote of the entire council, yeah.
Yeah, it's by the grain, so, yeah, but it's.
By a majority vote of the entire council.
So, okay, that's, okay, that's putting those city staff. If she is city staff.
Yeah.
You're looking at, so you're looking at sub two C, I believe, per site. Um, so that is specifically within, uh, that's intended to be specifically within.
For the, like, employee committee and the, the police committee, that's it. Board's commissions and committees.
So, so your charter just provides that the majority of the council may appoint and remove a municipal judge. Um, in terms of. What you actually need in your, your rules of procedure here, I mean, where the rules are most valuable is when they. Are helpful and like expanding on what's already in your charter or ordinance. Um, either expanding on or uh kind of consolidating information into one place. Like, for example, if you have something in your charter or ordinances that really. Rely on interpretation of like the word constitution or a statute to understand, but it's not totally clear, like. What you need to refer to, then you can kind of like spell that all out in your rules, so that people like know that all the information is in one place. Here, however, um. The, the provision around reviews, that all persons appointed by the council shall be subject to an annual review of the council. Doesn't appear to actually align with, directly align with past practice. And the annual review of the city manager is already provided for, and I can't remember if it's in your code or your charter, but it is. In there. Um, the. Uh, appointments, where it says all appointments require a majority vote of the entire council. Um, I think that also is directly provided for in your charter, so we can. Make clear, just to the extent that. You know, to make clear that it's a majority of the entire council, rather than a majority of quorum. So that's one thing that I've kind of noticed throughout all of your documents, is we do need to be really able to, like, follow the rules to make it clear, like. This is when you need a majority of the entire council, and this is when you need quorum, majority of quorum, so that could be helpful to continue to include. Um, and the, for, for both the appointment and removal. And the interference piece I would recommend keeping. Um. But I might recommend just taking the review piece out. Because it's already otherwise provided for and doesn't apply to the municipal judge position anyway. Um. Pretty much otherwise, leave at least sub one, as is, unless people have other questions or concerns.
You're saying remove sub, I mean.
Remove. You can either remove sub A, or if you feel like it would be helpful to just have that information all consolidated in one place. To modify sub A to provide, the city manager shall be subject to an annual review by the council.
That's what I would do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm appointed position.
Because the city manager is. Yeah. And if you wanted to provide clarity at the very top, where it says the council appoints and can remove those positions identified in the city charter. Which are the city manager and the municipal court, or again, the municipal judge, just so it's like consolidated in one spot, you could do that. Um, that could provide some more clarity as well. It's unnecessary from a legal standpoint, but it's more. Do you want all this information in one spot for like easier review?
Who was that?
I think we had what you're saying about adding, so it's easier for review, do you add something?
So, yeah, so um, the very first sentence says the council. Appoints and can remove those positions identified in the city's charter comma, which are the city manager and the municipal judge. The, I did have an suggested amendment for sub two A. Says unless otherwise mandated by state law, the mayor shall appoint the members of any board, commission, or committee authorized by council. It actually does not um align with your existing city charter, um, which requires consent of the council for the mayor's appointment.
Correct.
So I would modify this to read, unless otherwise mandated by state law, and with the consent of council, the mayor shall appoint the members of any board, commission, or committee. So I would modify this to read unless otherwise mandated by state law and with the consent of council, the mayor shall appoint the members of any board, commissioner, or committee here. And on removals, and this is a question for you because I, I can't remember if it's actually in your charter or code. But your existing rules for removals also require consent of the council for an appointed person to be removed by the mayor.
Here we're saying mayor, council, so. This, for example, chapter six, the minutes or the whole section are saying council. Does that rule not apply to me? Like, how does that work? So instead of part of the council, would I not get approval in that package? How would that work? Now we're separating me out of the council, then the other one we're back in the council. How does that, because it says on there like, you know, for example, we can't, we need like swim. Any member of the council may request an amendment for correction. Like, I couldn't do that. I'm not a member.
Well, it has to be approved by the council.
No, it's any member of the council may, may amend or correction minutes prior to filing. So I couldn't do that.
Right.
Only you.
Right.
How would we explain that?
Really interesting question and one that I think that sometimes our charter and code are clear. And I think sometimes is open to interpretation or somewhat ambiguous. So to me, the, the charter is clear that a mayor, the mayor is a member, counted as a member of the council when counting heads. Do we have quorum? So, um, four elected officials equals quorum always. Doesn't matter if it's for counselors, three counselors and the mayor, that's four. Um, but when I read outside of that. That's the only time the, the position of mayor is considered. Part of the council. That being said, um. That's where, and, and when I read this around the charter, and we could, like, pull the charter up here too. Um, it says, you know, you, um, that your duties and position, and one of the primary duties of the mayor is to ensure that. Um, uh. To enforce council rules. And so, um. Let me go ahead and pull that up.
Mayor presides over and facilitates council meetings, preserves order, enforces council rules, and determines the order of business under council rules. The mayor shall be the presiding office of the council. The mayor shall not vote except in case of a tie vote of the members of the council present. That's a big difference there, present. At a meeting with the consent of council, the mayor appoints members of commissions and committees established by ordinance or resolution. The mayor must sign all records of council decisions. The mayor serves as a political head of the city government. And.
But here's where, here. But here it says, so the definition of council says that the council consists of the mayor and six counselors nominated and elected from the city at large. So those are each of those council positions, one through six, plus the mayor position, uh, dealing with the elections there. Uh, and then the mayor presides over, facilitates, I think you just read. Um, so that's where, um. You know, we, where we're trying to figure out here is. When I read this for council definition, it says that it's, it's the mayor and the counselors, but then there's, um. Uh, no vote, and then there's, um, other, and I have, I don't, I wasn't prepared for this, and it's a good question. I have to get a little more. But there's other times throughout here in the charter and code where it makes it pretty clear that they're separate and distinct. And so we have, um, some clarifications that we need to do, and we probably need to come up with some. I don't know what you want to call it, MOUs until we maybe do, uh, put this back out to, uh, to a vote. We haven't done a charter amendment, I think since two thousand and seven. Um, yeah, two thousand and seven. And so it, it, it may be, that's typically, those are, um. Presented, uh, it can be a short, at the county level, counties are required every five years to do a charter review committee. Um, but the, uh, the county commissioners are under no obligation whatsoever to. Put out, put it out to, to vote or anything like that, uh, or even accept what the charter review committee, uh, proposes. Uh, but cities don't have that mandate, so.
Well, this. I hear this question coming up specifically in the context of whether or not the American proposed amendments to minutes, but I think.
Well, it's taken so long.
As well, that was a reference. Um. Because what I was going to say was, um. For that specific reference, you could, for now, because this will all go through full legal review. You wanted to say any member of the council, um, just put in parentheses, like including the mayor, if that's if you. Want to identify the mayor's counsel for purposes of. Proposing amendments, amendments, add it now and flag it for me that that's something that requires for the review on the legal review was going through, figured out. Essentially, because essentially what we're saying, when does the definition of council include the mayor and when does the definition of council not include the mayor?
Right.
For a variety of different policies and procedures.
So part of that example. Sorry, everybody. I'm going to talk this for, for six hours on.
It's a, it's a great question.
No, I think it is a good question. I mean, my, my neater reaction is that it, it, it feels like the intent, um, when the reference to council directly is. Well, it, it is a good question because there are, there are some places where reference to council, there may be some places where it's clear, we've got it. Um, and it would be good to do a review to. To figure out which is which and, um, come up with some definitional clarity, because we can, I mean, it's. Um. Your council policies and procedures can have, um, a definition section at the beginning. Uh, that we could use to help clarify some of this, at least based on existing law for now. And then, once that's clarified under existing law and your policies and procedures, then you do have a chance to say, well, maybe. That's something we want to change in our ordinance or charter.
I like that.
Like that. Cause yeah, it's always been my understanding. Um, when I was mayor, because we have a weak mayor system, is that the mayor really has, um. Influence, but really doesn't have any, any kind of power. They are basically running the, the show and that's it. They just keep order on the diocese and that's it. That, that's my understanding.
Right. I think that's been my basic understanding as well, but then I think. First thing I was getting to is even for the very bitty gritty specifics of like, does the term council include mayor for purposes of like sending out the agendas to the council? Very likely, yes. Very, I mean, the, I, I assume the practices and procedures have always been, yes.
Yeah.
Um, but if it is something where, you know, if there's a question being raised around clarity, then that's something that we can outline and kind of go through and figure out. And, um, be able to bring some clarity to that. I'll make a note to myself to include that as part of the legal review of the entire document.
I like it.
You think this?
I like it a lot.
Yeah.
I do. Good, yeah. We need to clear it up.
We've, we've covered, but you know, I mean, it sounds like there's a solution here is where we, you know, see things where council, council's not clear. You know, maybe we should take the time to add, and there, you know, where we agree that that's the case, but. Clearly we need to, I mean, I, you said it right off the bat, when you read through code and charter, it can get very confusing. And so, you know, somewhere down the road for all of us, we probably should look at a re, you know, look at a review.
Waterfill.
You know, we can't just change, um, you know, stuff, stuff has to, you know, go out for a vote, but you know, we probably need to review that and, you know, consider where it came from historically. And what everybody's thought it was and then get it legally clarified.
Yeah, so if I could, uh, kind of add on to that a little bit, Bruce, I would say, um, just for the sake, as we're going through the discussion, you're not, not, not because we're trying to be redundant or annoying to each other, whatever. But I would like to make sure that we, we, we have that nuance as each, we go through this. So for me personally, my recommendation to, to you all would be, you want as many eyes as possible on these minutes? I don't know why in the world you would not include the bear to be able to say.
Correct.
We got something wrong on these minutes.
Especially minutes.
Yeah.
But then you could turn around and say, no, you aren't a member of this council. You're the mayor. You don't need to make corrections on these. What? As a person supposed to be holding everyone accountable, how am I supposed to enforce the rules, yet the rules need not apply to D? Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, so for, for me, where I would delineate there would be, um, just. Uh, so where the charter and code get sort of the differences where I, where I'm here, so I'm an ex officio member of the council, means I'm neither elected nor do I have a vote. Um, but I'm allowed to participate in the, in the discussion there. I would say, uh, uh, in this. Not that you would be acting as an ex officio member, but you would, uh, you still don't get, I, I would still say you wouldn't get to make the. A motion proposal, but you certainly are participating in that. We should probably, this should be looking at, you should be looking at, you know, let's make these changes. They basically get to do everything short of the motion. That, that's where I would say. Of course, yeah. Yeah.
But. The letter of our rules.
Yeah.
That's, that's the point of their vision. This is like, you know, special two is one that it happens.
You got it. Yep, it does. I agree. And so, um, I like your idea of. A definition is likely going to be one of the easiest ways, uh, in, in here to, to fix that, because otherwise you're going to have to have it. Nuanced every single time through here and just, just define and, and do that. And so, um, I would. For the sake of, we'll help you, we'll have you help us draft it, but if you're in agreement with me there, mayor, I think it's, it's, it's participating in all these discussions. That we're talking about so far, you're all along the way. It's just, it's just short of the motion. That, that's it.
Yeah.
And this, this, this isn't asking for motion. This is, you can make the request. So this is just looking to your counselors to the left and right and saying, I, I think we need to change item nine point three. We got it wrong. We should do this. Yeah.
So. Saying, hey, we're going to quickly allow Darren to preside of the meeting while I make this motion, which is. So we're not going to.
Sure.
So I would, I would suggest for, um, for now. Whereas does any member of the council, if you just want to put in parentheses, including the mayor, and that parentheses will, um. Uh, signal to on legal review that that is part of the wind is helpful and includes the mayor's commitment. And I. David, since you are, um, it looks like you are using comments, maybe, maybe if you just wanted to add a comment right there of like. Like flagging for legal review or something like that, so that I can remember. I mean, I'm writing it down too.
Yeah. No problem. There we go.
Yeah, but I'm.
Yeah, I'm road stand here.
It's toasty.
Yeah. John, John and I are the only men in the office and I've realized that we just run hotter than everybody. So if I touch the thermostat, everybody's. I'll just, I'll just be mad.
You know, there's something wrong when you're coming into the office in July in a hoodie.
That's a good thing. Cause then if you're cold, you just go outside for a little bit.
Be extra toasty.
Probably. That, that look didn't look like very friendly, so probably. What about cracking your, your window?
In my cubicle form?
Dave, we need to get a window in the cubicle.
No, she'd be ordering. Excuse me. You like the order? There she is, the judge.
Speaking of the municipal clerk, you're right on. Was there anything else in this section here that we wanted to?
Well, your existing policies and procedures actually have a very detailed process that the mayor is required to follow for, um. For removing citizens from the city committee or commission prior to the expiration of their term. Um, and I don't know. How much of that you want to transfer over into your new policies and procedures.
Do we need to if it's?
You don't. You don't necessarily need to. So this, this again gets back to my comments at the, at the beginning of. The LOC rules provide a framework, but then, you know. More explicit direction could be helpful in situations where. It's an event that comes up very rarely, but you want to make sure that the procedures that you follow are consistent from one event to the next.
But in the charter, it is pretty specific.
So if you're looking at your existing policies and procedures, it would be on page nine, filling vacancies on boards, commissions, and committees. So there's a very detailed process for removal, um. That is actually a somewhat public process. Uh, one thing that I noted with this is that it doesn't, um. Account for when the removal is simply due to a resignation, um, which may be removal and resignation are two different things, so that's. Okay, but it's just kind of a point of unclarity. Um. I'm wondering if anyone knows the history of why this became so detailed in the first place.
Well, I, I, I think some of it, if I remember correctly, we had a, a mayor that would just, um, remove people at will. Um, because they didn't like their, um, processes, so that this was put in there to kind of narrow that down to where they. They didn't have that much of a. Overstand.
I think it's important to provide this. The section. Saying, hey, we're going to put something agenda, this is a notice for you, then you can talk about it publicly. Otherwise, I don't think we need any.
This missing three consecutive meetings was a big part of it, uh, particularly when it came to the planning commission.
Correct.
Uh, we have planning commissioners who just like disappeared. Um, and so this, this became.
So then this coming by. Is. Is that within the charter, it says through consecutive, or is it within our rules? But then kind of these rules govern other meetings.
Yeah, so your, 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 um, charter says the mayor can remove with the consent of the council, is what I believe. And then, and then your rule defined that further.
Well, it just says three consecutive. I'm sure I'm curious, like if they're. How would we, like, how does that work? We, we're moving off the screen, so I would experience, how do we? How does council rules? Dictate what the things can be as well? Like, how do those rules?
So, so in your code, it all, it says that, it says that the rules of the council are the rules of the commissions and committees. So they're. Yeah, uh, it's, it's in one of them. I don't know if it's in the charter or the ordinance, but.
Depends on the committee too. Like, the library committee says, um, you know, a committee member may be removed by the mayor with the approval of. City council before the expiration of the member's term. Um, and then for Parks and Rec, there was another, like, each committee has its own way to remove.
Here we go. Good cause shall include absence from three consecutive meetings or fifty percent of the meetings. No, this is finding commission.
Oh, okay. So Parks and Rec and planning have the same clause then, but the library is different.
But, uh, we have to go that further. How do we have city councils that will place the capes on the future of the year?
Um, I guess I have a follow-up question for you, mayor, is, um. Uh, keep going back to pointing, if the charter doesn't say it, it doesn't exist, but the. Uh keep going back to pointing, if the charter doesn't say it, it doesn't exist, but the you, you guys can create rules more strict than the charter.
I'm just saying, I'm curious, like. But. My point is, is my, my question is, is if we have council rules. And we have these separate committee rules. How does council rule dictate what's happening? And that's how we align those. I'm not saying that he cannot, I'm saying. Not, no, we cannot. How do these two work together? Two things through my, because our current rules say three. This says three, library says two.
It didn't say.
Well, cause we, and we, we did a total redo of the library board.
Yeah.
Two years back.
But their rules are different, but our council will say one thing. Which rules do we go?
You would go by the rules. If the council rules are different than the rule than what is in um your city ordinances, the city ordinances would prevail. Um but that might be an argument in favor of not, I'm glad we're having this conversation, um it helps me kind of understand of where. These vacancy pieces were coming from and the considerations behind them. I think that is an argument in favor of. Not transporting what is in your current policies and procedures into. The new ones, at least not transporting all of it, because what I'm hearing you saying, I'm looking at the ordinances here is that for each one of those separate committees. They do have their own. Removal provisions and we don't wanna create. Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna create confusion by asking them.
Or you fix the ordinance, you know, you you're gonna have to fix one or the other.
So I think we add that to our current, our new rules saying that removal procedures wind out.
Can you just say as established by title two?
Yeah.
That's, that's all, all our boards and commissions.
I just wanna make sure I don't have some weird committee that's not under title two for some weird reason. Let me do a quick look. I'm ninety nine percent sure.
Oh, rain so, oh.
It's, it's all title two, so.
Okay, it's all.
All title two.
Only, only a few. That's just how the ADHD brain.
Every third day Nancy's like, really, really? Cause my computer goes, I can't do this anymore, Dave, and it just gives up the ghost. She has to come in and be like. Dave, do you see how many things?
So I'm just gonna say maybe removed according to title two.
Pure chaos, organized chaos.
I think all of them say uh. Well, so one, your rules actually dig a little bit deep. One, you can remove and then um the council still has to uh approve the removal. Um which I I believe is in in all of those. So we'd have to.
I need to labor this more, but I am looking at the library advisory committee. As an example, and it provides that committee member can be removed by the mayor with the approval of city council, the force version term. For three nights case instances or other violations of the council's policies and procedures. Or for a change of residence. And so this is the situation where the ordinance is. Wasn't be pointing to the policies and procedures for if the council wants to provide for other opportunities for removal, which you do in your. Disruptive or inappropriate behavior.
Yep, and I, I think that was the language that we were trying to update the rest of the committees with, and we just. So we have a million projects going on that we didn't get there.
Yeah.
Updating ordinances, yes.
That is like project number one for when we get a on staff city attorney is deep dive, go through it.
But if you're not, and you've lived that for several months or however long that takes.
Do you like you, Matilla? And there's a.
Do you wonder if you do wanna import this? This, I mean, if if the whole intent of having this in your council policies and procedures is. You wanna make sure that there is an opportunity for removal due to disruptive or inappropriate behavior and you want that to be. You want that to, it's there now and you don't wanna lose it between now and when you actually have an opportunity to update your ordinances. Then you're gonna wanna import it into this new draft of policies and procedures.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everybody?
So are you saying we wanna take this language and put that into their policies and procedures?
No, what I'm saying is um on your existing. Policies and procedures, so going to your existing policies and procedures, page nine, yeah. Um where it says reasons for removal may include but are not limited to. Um and I don't know that you wanna. Well, I guess that's a council decision of whether or not you wanna say but not limited to.
I think you say but not.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, so I think you wanna um pick up that whole sentence. Reasons for removal, that whole sentence and the sentence after it, and make sure that that shows up in your.
Moving forward.
Yeah.
And then I have a follow up question, just, cause you pointed out the library. Does every. Section entitled two lay that out, is it just the library? Cause if it's just the library, then we're back to.
Yeah. Well, all the others of the, excuse me. The other ones talk about have that same three day, three. Uh and then the Parks and Rec has four fifty percent because Parks and Rec moved to quarterly. And so if you miss three, that means you're missing seventy five percent. So we put that fifty percent rule in there because they moved to quarterly.
What you could do is add a clause at the very beginning of that first paragraph and say. Unless is otherwise provided and spicity ordinance, reasons for removal may include. Yeah, right there. Unless is otherwise provided by city.
It's because I copied and pasted and now it's different fonts and so now it's getting all out of me. Yeah, uh let me get this, unless as always provided by city ordinances. Little R.
Um there may be, there may be a better way to phrase that. Um but I think that's enough of a flag for me later to identify that what you're trying, and I'll make notes myself, that what you're trying to get at here is. The, these outlines of reasons for removal are only in situations where the ordinance is kind of. Pointing to the policies and procedures.
It's fine, we'll feel, we'll, we'll deal with format.
It sounds like the entire training unit is. The only time that you want this clause to. Send in that identifies like disruptive behavior is one of the reasons and that sort of thing is if the ordinance specifically points to the. Council rules.
Well, so how do we ensure that? We aren't just constantly calling back each other. Whose role is this somewhere? But I think that suffices, it looks otherwise private city ordinance. And that that covers us to where it uses, not only just the information, but allows us to understand. If the ordinance has a difference than what we're currently listing and enable us to remove.
Yeah, and and again, I'm not sure that that's like the absolute best language, but it's enough of a flag to.
It's a bandaid.
It's well, and it's enough of a flag that, you know, when I do my ultimate red line.
Alright, so. This. I did not want all of it. Okay. Moving on. Not sure if there's anything here you wanted to discuss further. Just take a moment.
Come to the media that way.
Yeah.
Was there anything in our existing that was like? You know, as far as ethics and decorum?
Yeah, so on the ethics one, one question that I have counsel is. Um to that point, it's sometimes it's nice to have everything all once thought. In addition to um all of you being subject to the state ethics laws, um you also have a code of conduct. In your city ordinance. Uh and just for purposes of helping to remind. Folks of the code of conduct, I have the question for you of whether or not you would wanna add that here to say a council shall review and observe the requirements of state ethics law and. And your own code of conduct.
Yes.
And uh ordinance one six four.
Six four, that's an old ordinance.
Understand that a council member's function is policymaking and not administrative. discourage some committees of the council, which tend to be influenced by council's policymaking, responsibly. Refusing to play politics in either the political partisan sense or in any other sense. Respect the right and relevance of the community to her official meetings. Recognize that the authority rests only with the city council in official meetings. Refuse to participate in every year meetings which are not official and when called in, you not have the opportunity to attend. Refuse to make commitments on any matter which should properly become the point council as a whole. Make decisions only after all available facts bearing on the question of been presented and discussed. Respect the opinion of others, which should certainly accept the principle of majority rule in council decisions. Insist that also be business transaction beyond ethical and above court basis. Refuse to use the members' position on to the council in any way whatsoever for personal meaning or personal reasons or prestige. Refuse to bring personal problems into council consideration. Add the honest and accurate evaluation of all present and handicapped employees and uphold the confidentiality of that session. I think it's a very good code of conduct and a reminder, seems like a proper reminder for folks.
Yes. So let's do.
Can we rewrite um ethics C? Cause my Latina brain does not translate that very well. Can it be something to the extent of clearly state when expressing personal opinions that differ from official position of the council? It just reads weird.
Yeah, I think it's because it's trying to match the lead in that shall refrain from, so shall refrain from. Without so saying, it's the hard part to.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree. Expressing an opinion contrary to the official position of the council without.
Shall refrain from expressing an opinion contrary to the official position of the council without so saying is how it currently reads, right?
Yeah, and it's the, I think what, is it's that so saying is trying to be shorthand for without. Clearly stating that your intent is to express an opinion.
Yeah.
Contrary to the official. So it's like, it's using so saying to shorten that and it's confusing. Yeah. So it's a expressing an opinion contrary to the official position of the council without. Explicitly indicating. The intent to express an opinion contrary to the official position of.
Right, so you have to, you have to say, this is my personal opinion, is what it's trying to say, but it reads weird.
Specifically indicating the attempt to express opinion. That is. As an individual that is contrary to. As an individual's point, you need to say as.
Sorry.
That's just right where your person, no, uh no. So go back to where I go back to the new red line language. And the new red line language, driven in. Tend to express an opinion that is contrary to the official position.
And this is one of the clarification, the council actually has to vote on their official. So like, for example, the bond, they didn't actually, council never voted.
It was voted upon to send it out to the voter.
Yes.
That was the position.
That, that is the official action of the council.
The official action of the council was to refer to the voters. The official position was to send it out to the voters.
It's the same, it would be interpreted. It would be the same, cause we approved it, we wouldn't have sent it out had we not had it.
No, so you, you could have taken an additional action as a council. The way that that had to have been done is staff could not draft it, could not consult on it, could not do anything. So one of you would have had to have. Uh.
Correct.
Gone to the mayor, or actually you guys would have had to have taken a vote. Gone to mayor, said I want something on the agenda, you would have had to have drafted it. And then said, we want to take an official position because staff can participate in any of that. Uh as to what that, what your position might be on that, uh on that bond. Um so, and I'm not, I wasn't, I'm not even allowed to say, hey, hey, are you guys wanna take an official position? I'm not even allowed to do that. So the only thing I was allowed to do is to do what we did, which is. Describe the process, this is what we're doing and, and you guys needed to pass by resolution to place the item on, on the ballot, which, so we did all of those things. Describe the process, this is what we're doing, and and you guys needed to pass by resolution to place the item on on the ballot, which, so we did all of those things. But you didn't take uh, the city council of Yumatilla adopts in favor of or against, you didn't do that.
I disagree.
You didn't do that.
Specifically, we did not do that, you're right. But the reasonable person sitting on the couch would take into consideration that we did support it because we passed the GOG. Would you not?
No, I I actually, I would go back to actually the comments that Dennis made during the meeting, which was. And this is what he described before he made the vote was. Um, it was in, he believed, it was in the best interest of the city to ask the question. Not that you took a position, but we should ask this to the voters. I'm voting in favor of this resolution because the voters deserve to answer this question. There's a, there's, the nuance to me is 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 specific there enough that that were um. The the city council didn't take in an official position, the council did what they were supposed to do, which is get it to the ballot, but you didn't take a position one way or the other.
How would you vote in a foul of this new red line language?
I think it means like without saying so at the end though.
I crossed out the associate.
I'm just joking.
It's kind of obvious, it's, we didn't modify anything, we added to it. Okay. Through this first section.
There are um. There are provisions in your existing policies and procedures for ethics and professional conduct, which I think are um. Substantively covered um. Here without having to repeat them, and the way that the Oregon City does it, I think is um, perhaps a little bit more clear. Um, but there's also provisions for ethical or professional professional conduct violations, there are procedures. And I'm not sure that I recall seeing procedures for addressing ethics or professional conduct violations coming up anywhere else in the the league's model. So I don't know, I think council wants to have a conversation about whether or not those should be imported.
So you heard from our.
From your current ones, so your current ones are on page seven? There's a D as well, if you want to scroll down, so that you can just. Almost seem altogether.
My question is. I'm reading D, and if one of the council members was found. To be at fault for an ethical violation or to be paid fine, right, if I had an ethical violation, then. We would have something executive section, even though there aren't substantial evidence grounds existed. Like how would we, would we have to do our own investigation of the council into those violations and then continue the process?
I'm not sure that I'm tracking your question.
Alright, so. So say I have an ethics violation against me. It says under subsection B, to exercise such right, the alleged offenders must first be notified of a finding that a legal ground existed. That a substantial violation has occurred, so. If a third party body, let's say O A G C says yes, team, you need to pay five, does that count as substantial? Or does it even, do we have to have a hurdle or investigation of the council? Compared prior?
What sounds prior investigation?
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like.
Yeah, so do we have to be prior to a hurdle investigation?
So, should we, I took it A, that it's number one, it's the council has the right to enforce their own rules, so this is. Uh, on you, you can, it could be something that's brought by a third party, by another organization or anything like that. Uh, and then we also have, we have may in here a few times, which means you're under no obligation to. Thou should, there's not, there's not a thou shalt do, there's a may do. Um, that's here, and so I look at. And I think that's what when chapter ten, we kind of talked about when we created this very long. All right, wait. Um, oh, cause I'm in the wrong document. When we did in your updated uh, stuff here, we created this, here's our complaint sensor sanction removal. We created all of these like four pages of three pages of, this is how we want to have complaints if we have, if we have concerns about each other's. Uh, conduct or behavior or about the city manager's conduct or behavior, this is, this is the process that we wanted to follow. Um, I, what we're, I think though, the intent there is not to um. You know, remove anybody's, everybody has a right to file a complaint with the appropriate state agency at any time for any reason, you can do that no matter. So your rules aren't going to be able to say thou shalt not do that, you can't do. Um, but I think the, what we we talked about before, the the desire is if we can take care of our own. Concerns internally, we want to do that. Um. Um, yeah.
And that actually I can kind of answer in some ways in my mind, I'm glad that you referenced the chapter one of eight down to chapter ten. Because I feel like that that helps provide context just for the question of whether you would import this. Ethics or professional conduct violation procedures from your current rules into the new ones, and that argues because. You've created a process, you've already created a process of chapter ten. That would cover this, it would almost be duplicative, it would be duplicative. To import this over, so I think that kind of answers the question that don't import it over because you've already discussed and created. You've created a separate process that would cover these situations.
On two and three, and their subsection? Anyone else have further comments?
The next one, chapter nine, gets to, well, this was the the circumstance, the the example mayor said that you were bringing up at the very beginning of the year about interaction with the attorney. Um, so the leads. I just jumped to the second one, because it was top of my mind, my apologies, but um, the sub two is interactionless city attorney. Um, so the lead takes a different approach than your existing um, policies, which is uh. No more than once a month, so long as the request does not require more than two hours of the attorney's time. And maybe conditional requests within that month or make a request that exceeds. Current priority of the council, so that is a more.
So I've got a point of clarification on this, not that it's more a combination process more than a clarification. So let's say, for example, we're going to be using the example we did then, alright, so Creed is upset at something that my city employee did. And she wishes to contact the city attorney, may have a conversation with it, it looks for three hours. Now. She would have to make a request to the council, she can't have that on the agenda, she talked to me about it. I can talk to you, I don't want to have this agenda.
Or she can talk to me that to the agenda if she wants, yeah. She can talk to me.
Yeah.
But I can add to the agenda.
Yeah.
Right, that's, that's my question, so that's my, that's my concern, okay, so that you have provisions saying the council members can't add. So. How does that come to the question?
Yeah.
You can add it, but what if, let's say it's about me, you're like, I'm not going to add it. So then it becomes a gene that I can say, I want this to add to the agenda.
Yeah, so there's, in my understanding, there's, there's really three ways a counselor can get something added to the agenda. One is in open session, uh, somebody makes the motions, it's seconded, and it runs through, so I think everyone's clear on that one, that's pretty clear. The other two ways is if I want it on the agenda, it goes on the agenda, and if you want it on the agenda, it goes on the agenda, and it's not really up for debate. For either of those three options, it it's it's non-debatable, it goes on the agenda. So the only concept there is would be the circumstance you said, so if a counselor were to contact uh, me or you. And um. Request either of us to put something on the agenda and neither of us say, we're not doing that. Then 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 their only recourse is to get into open session and and say, I want to talk about. And then during item four on the agenda, when they want to add an item to add to, they could say, I want to add an item under discussion or whatever, and then they can be motioned, and we can have that discussion.
So they do have.
They do have. Yeah, so if if mayor says stonewalls, a nice stonewall, I know that's a hard word, but you understand what I'm saying, if you say no. They have a way to still get it on the agenda if they want to do that. Yeah. Yeah, and I, I don't know if I've ever uh, told a a council member, no, I know I've certainly said, can you wait a month? Because if this is coming or we're still working on that or something like that, but I don't think I've ever said, I'm not putting that on the agenda. So, but doesn't mean that I, that, well, could it change, or is it possible that I recognize that it is, but. It's all Dennis, no? Yeah, every time.
Thinking it's rain.
Okay, that was my question out there, I didn't see anything issue those, but he's that.
So one of the things um, that will be, just because this also has attorney on here. Um, so I'll be, I'll be bringing an ordinance uh, to you uh, sometime uh, in either June or July. To add the city attorney into the code because we don't have it in our code right now for this position. And it's still a uh, city uh, manager appointed position, because the charter only allows for supervision of the city manager. But the attorney, you're gonna end up putting the attorney sometimes in these weird positions where perhaps council wants something, city manager doesn't want to have it, you need to have access to the attorney or that kind of stuff, so. Uh, good news is is Brady did a great job of sending over, the LLC has a draft ordinance of exactly what that should be, so we're going to take that and. Uh, pretty much just uh, take the cookie cutter template and we'll bring that to you here um. Uh, either at your June, probably not your June third, but your June uh, seventeenth first meeting, and then your July first, I believe, is when we'll get that codified and go into fact. August first, the uh, in the meantime, you'll probably see the attorney position be posted um, next month. Just.
They got C. See at the level of rate that I. Limiting the delivery of pressure, very bad for the pressure to answer, particularly at day to day. Feeling it adds great, I feel like we should be truly running this through Dave, and if Dave sees it as something that is a question worth asking to, for example. I find it too. Person. To um, email Scott ever, or email Dave ever, without Dave being. Um, I want to do it, I don't, you show that door to allow council members to do that. Without saying, hey Dave, I noticed that a street light is off on Third Street, that's not a directive from a council member, I want to make that always. I think C adds, yeah, that's part of the scrawd day to day, but you want Dave to be the mouthpiece hold.
I kindly object, uh, because there are times where you guys need, when's our meeting, what, can you print a packet for me, can you do this? Those are all day-to-day operations, or when you have uh, questions, you know, about, hey, why is this item on here, Melissa, can you please explain this to me? Those are easy day-to-day stuff, so I think, I think the the request for that came when uh, we were having. Difficulties with the previous city manager that was not in the office, and we were trying to schedule meetings. And we couldn't schedule meetings because we couldn't get a hold of the previous city manager, and so it it was limiting. The way that we were able to conduct business at that point, so um.
So. I'm sort of in between both of you, and this is, if I could make a proposal, my proposal would be. The city recorder and the department directors and the city attorney is probably appropriate for. And and we can maybe redefine if we need to what day-to-day means, for quick and basic things, so for example, we get a, this time of year, we start getting a lot of questions about potholing and stuff like that. And um. We, we, we know we're potholing, but it's, it's very subject, we use a lot of the adults in custody labor. We use a lot, we don't own any of that, like hot oil equipment, we don't own that, so we have to rent it. It's based upon its availabilities, staff call and sick, all kinds of weird things. So we say, we're, we're fixing potholes in the summer. And so, but we get a question a lot from the community, and sometimes you guys have friends or something else, and. It, to me, it's it's not necessarily a big deal to say, hey Scott, when, you know when you'll be over in this area of the woods or whatever. Um, I, I don't have a problem with some sort of those kind of basic day-to-day. Kind of things, I think that's, and and it's appropriate at a director level. What what has happened in the past, which has been very frustrating, and Nancy's kind of alluded this a little bit, but and you're alluding to it too, Mayor, is um. We've had uh, uh, somebody out doing Praxial, and a city counselor pulls over literally and gets out of his car and is like. Hey, when you're going to come do that at my house, and how come you haven't, and then they start giving them the what for on the side of the street, that is totally not okay.
My question, that is.
Is so, where's the delineation, and who, how do you make that determination? And I like your approaches, it's it's super clear, it's the city manager, the end, that that makes it clear as can be. But I also want to be pragmatic and recognize we are still small community. Sometimes answers are quickly and readily available, for me, I'd rather manage that on a um, internal uh, staff memo and say. Directors and city recorder, uh, counselors can reach out to you on basic day-to-day stuff, every time that happens, I need you to tell me. And so I think. So, and I could just, so from your guys, it can be this kind of language here. You're asking Nancy, when's the next meeting, and or can I get a copy of this, or can I do, you know, that stuff is totally fine, that's not an issue at all. What I need, Nancy already does this, is, hey, Council Funderberg asked me for this thing, or whatever. I agree, and that's what I'm saying, we may, maybe we just want to come up with the different.
I've I've texted Scott for like a while, bro, and actually twice, and.
And that's the thing, you guys are extra eyes and ears for us sometimes, and we get that, like, so say, hey, I don't know if you knew this, but the the light post on this street is out, and it's like, okay.
I have to agree with the mayor and the fact that I, so we're thinking about five years from now, maybe ten years from now, when one of the same people sitting around this table. And and we're opening ourselves up to what it was before.
Yeah.
Which is understandable, but every time you need something from me, a prime tobacco, I'll be like, can't talk to you, please ask Dave.
Yeah.
I'm saying that I can see the whole, I can't talk to you directly alone, I can't talk to, I can't talk to Dave directly, but I can't talk to you.
Uh, maybe we do that, just make, make sure that the city manager is uh, apprised, yeah. Advised, see, see, however you want to. Yeah, maybe.
So if I forget to print the packet, you're gonna make sure Dave's in the room before you ask for it?
Heck, yeah.
I'm trying to get, like, you're, you're standing. Yeah, like, I, I'm gonna be like, I'm gonna completely ignore you because I can't.
In here, but but I, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm right where you guys are at, but I think sort of one standard deviation away from there.
I'm gonna sit here and be like.
Right.
That's exactly what I'm gonna be like.
Who is Dave?
We are talking about. One is. Who, who can council and mayor send their individual inquiries to, and the separate individuities, so on the individual inquiries. What I'm hearing is perhaps it's limit those individual inquiries to. Um, staff. Who are the city, either the city manager, city recorder, or department heads, so you're not reaching out to other people, may get.
I'll tell you, the other levels, I mean, they, there have been, and it's happened, and it's happened a lot in the past, um. And some of those staff, they are freaked out. It has not been. But yeah.
Was there anyone else who would include in that list? So it's the city manager, city recorder and.
Department and city, city attorney and department heads.
Because there's sometimes of like, hey, I get the checks.
Sure. That's, that's their job. At that point, you're sort of, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. We can be, because Nancy's right. We want to sit here and split hairs and look like Sunday. We can get down and point for a little bit and some coffee to the council.
Hey, those checks that are sitting right there on your desk can have those. I can't talk to you. I'm sorry.
So, I mean, when I.
And it should be information that's readily available. And I think that's what their, the current stuff says, uh, and their current policy. It's like things that are readily available. Or easily available.
I think so. I think that's how I read it.
And I'm gonna say printing is not readily available because a hundred and fifty pages is too much to print.
Hey, trees, trees are a renewable resource, everybody.
So you have computer problems. I'll be like, go talk to Dave.
We got secure real school funds and timber funds, yeah.
Yeah, when you guys have computer problems, okay, who are you gonna go talk to?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's good. So um.
Is yours updating too?
Lost my page numbers because I. I gotta back. I, I gotta.
So it's seventy.
I guess we're gonna have to get four more.
So it essentially take that. What is?
I like that this does, well. I don't, I don't even wanna do, I, I could, I would rather take away staff and just say it's department heads. City reporter. Oh, for the check.
Sure.
No, but, I mean, that's.
Or within reason.
That's their day to day duties though.
It is. Well, that's just limiting requests for information. That's just, can you go get me that? That's not really.
That is true, yeah.
I wouldn't go that.
Bring it to.
What? I mean, really.
Are we gonna say the checks aren't holding information?
No, they, they are holding information, but you're inquiring, you're, you're just, you're just saying, hey, can you give me the checks? It's not like you're going, hey, can you do some research on?
Right.
Why?
It feels a little bit like, like we might be splitting hairs more than is necessary. I mean, it's but it's questions that maybe like, we're saying questions that may be answered readily or with only the most minimal of research. And there is some level of discernment that can be applied to, is this something that may be answered readily? Front desk staff, will you give me the checks?
Yeah.
That can be answered readily. Um, can you print the packet for me? That can be answered readily. Can you look up this city ordinance? That's a minimal amount of research. So I don't, you know, as long as we expect our city counselors to apply discernment, that seems pretty clear and more clear than what we've already.
I agree. I do.
So it just replaces that C.
With our own.
With your own language. I don't even know if you'd take out. I don't think you'd take out one and two.
Did I take out one and two? Oops, sorry.
And then change it from number one to go back to her significant resources and then just put our fifteen minute, whatever.
Do you still want the fifteen minute? Or I thought that you were perhaps arguing that.
So I mean, what do you want can have a significant amount? I think two hours is more than. I think fifteen minutes is too low. I think an hour or more.
When you're talking about staff, um, your existing rules say one hour or more. Um, when you're talking about staff. When you're talking about the city attorney and sub two, we're ready to move on to that. That's where you get into the fifteen minute piece.
I think exactly one hour instead of two hours. And then we add the the point you're bringing up, uh, city attorney, then we post staff number. We change that to not be fifteen minutes. So then two hours is still too much for me. It's perfect in one hour.
Did anyone's gonna actually use two hours? It's like a really important thing.
Then, then it should be approximately.
Well, do we? I am. So the LOC's proposal is interesting in this sort of once a month two hours.
Yeah, it can kind of.
That's what, and that's the way I kind of heard that and it, and is it a calendar month? Is there a rolling thirty days month? Uh, so. Yeah, uh, so. And is it, is it topical? Is it two hours per topic? One hour per topic?
I think it says more than months, more than once a month. So I can do it once, I can call in.
Calendar months.
And go in the month of December, I can call Miss McGee once for a maximum of two.
That's why I read it as.
Yeah, yeah. I have a request with the plural, so I can make multiple requests to the city attorney.
Oh, that is.
More than, no more than once. So I can do it once.
On all. So it doesn't matter what you call on. You can only call.
Yeah, like.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, for example, the phone hook is disconnected on the same counter day, I can call them back.
And I mean, most commonly, what actually, yeah, yeah. And I mean, what actually happens in practice a lot of times is you get a request from a client, can you answer this question for me? No, I can't answer that question for you off the top of my head. I need to go research it and it's gonna take me. How good of an answer do you want? Do you want a thirty minute answer or do you want a five hour answer?
Right.
Two hours, man.
I think two hours is excessive. I think one hour max. In one calendar month.
I don't know. I think the two hours is fine. Just, I've never called the city attorney. Like, I, I don't know. Most people probably haven't. So I mean, we're probably most realistically not gonna use it. But I mean, what if there's that once in a blue moon thing where you just need the, I mean, I understand going to council and getting approved, but I don't, I just don't have any problem with two hours because I'm guessing it does not get used very often. I mean, I don't know.
I hope that we come up with a a process that would allow us to have communication prior to having to call, having to call the attorney. That, that's my hope, is that if we have a contention of something, that we can have a discussion amongst ourselves that would, would not have that. That's my hope.
Do you give a discount for texting? I just wanted to see, try and save some cash here.
Yeah, do not, you're not even go.
That's true, that's true.
Client confidentiality and whatnots.
Yes.
With, with self-destructing phone.
No texting.
I mean, Mission Impossible does come out tomorrow, so I appreciate that. This message will self-destruct. I, I can. Yeah, so, um. It's, it's, yeah.
I just don't see, I don't see, I personally see the problem. It's two hours. Like, I doubt anyone ever uses it. And, but it's there kind of thing.
So I'll, I'll, my issue isn't, isn't the one hour or two hour. My issue is just once. So only once a month, you only get one, one question. Yeah.
Two hours for.
For the whole.
You get, you get two hours of access to the attorney for the month. And that might be one question where they need to go research something, or maybe um or may, maybe you have two separate questions or something that, that came up that you felt that needed to be there.
I don't think Miss McGee wants to be calling her. I mean, if I really, I'm good, I can wait. Two minutes a time. I, I can be that person's life over the help of two minutes.
Hey.
She doesn't have to answer the phone, right?
So let me ask you a question.
So for two minutes. I, I don't even want to split hairs, but I think you want to say, you get once, if it needs you more than two hours, then you need to go get a pass from the majority council. And you need to talk to a person, let's say Darren is investigating any person on this council. And he's gonna consult with the council or the social new council more than once.
Well, so that's, you're bringing up exactly my point. Why, why do I need to call the attorney? So let's back that. Let's, let's go back to the cart, not the horse. So let's figure out, why would I call the attorney? What would that be for? And would it be best if I had um, counsel involved?
So my concern is, for example, in the last meeting we had. I would have loved to have talked to Miss McGee for two hours on the phone before we had that meeting to go, I have some words of clarification. I don't understand what's happening here. Can we define emergency? I had access to it and not more than fifteen minutes, or I knew that I had two hours and we're doing that once a month.
Well. Your current rules allow you more than fifteen minutes coordinating with the city manager. So you can do that.
But I would have to say.
Well, I.
I mean, you know what I mean? Like, that's what I'm saying. It's like as much as I want to say, yeah, my party's city manager, but.
No, no, I'm s-. No, no, I'm saying you can say, I'd like to talk to the attorney. Things can take longer than fifteen minutes. I got these big questions. And I can say, yeah, let's, let's do it. Pick up the phone.
But.
Yes.
Your, your current rules allow longer than fifteen minutes. It's just. Or, or cleared by the city's manager.
Yes.
Your current rules. This is, this, yeah, yeah, your current rules.
Anyway, I don't.
I think.
I don't have a problem with that.
Currently is stated in the LOC rules.
Well, again, I, I want to go back to why, what's the necessity of call? Is it um, for clarification of something like that?
Or, or clarification of, hey, what's the process to remove this city manager? It's not gonna give you more than fifteen minutes. Cause I'm like, hey Dave.
Right.
So I have to go to council and like, hey everybody, I have a request, I have a concern about, and if the less of a move is the, of the manager. I can't announce that because that turns into purely like concession life.
Right.
So then we get this of all sorts and then I can't talk to them. You know what I mean? Like that.
I know. I know what you mean.
What is the LOC basic guideline? What was it again?
I mean, the LOC's basic guideline is you may make requests to the attorney for advice no more than once a month, so long as the request is not referred more than two hours to the attorney's time. Now.
Okay, so.
If I'm interpreting that, it's, let's see, how would I interpret? I would have if one request. But one request doesn't necessarily mean a single communication, right? Because if you call, you have a question for me. I have a request for a clarification. And I may be able to give you that clarification immediately and it's like a fifteen minute phone call and we're done. And that's your one request for the month. Or you might give me that request and um, I'm not really understanding the question. We end up trying to go back and forth. It's like a half hour phone call and then into that phone call, I say, you know, I don't actually know the answer to this. I'm gonna have to do some research. We've used up about a half an hour of your two hours per month. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go do about an hour's worth of research for this and see how good of an answer I can get you and then call you back. And we can have another half hour phone call and that's your like two little hours for the month. So it's, it's one request.
Okay, that's reasonable. Doesn't it just one request a month up to two hours? I mean, that way it's, we're not, hopefully not overburdening. But.
I, I mean, I think that that is a reasonable LOC guideline. Um, and so, so it sounds like we're landing, at the end of the day, what we're landing is just keeping the LOC.
Yeah, I think that. I, I think that's.
Yeah. And, and you may end up, this may be something that you end up re-disenning when you have an in-house city attorney. Because when they're in-house, you know, their compensation is gonna be different. You know, the billing is gonna be different and they're office right here and all those things might change, but for now, while you have routine counsel.
Well, I, I, I mean, first of all, I want to say, I, I think it's great that we have an attorney here because just like the interpretation that he was requesting about what's an emergency or whatever, if we have somebody here that we can also garner information from, not, not that you're not giving us the information.
The attorney here to do. That's why we're changing this, the model, adding the staff.
So I do highly recommend sending fish ladder down there.
Cause, cause in the end, we're all, we're all really smart, but none of us are attorneys. And so it's really nice to have the attorney present.
Well, you know, some of us got other degrees and where you went to.
Um, this beautiful.
That's all he needs right there.
Right there.
Yes.
And chapter ten, you've already done a lot of work on and there may be additional questions, but this seems like.
That was a big one.
The goal of tonight is to or how we've kind of been moving so far is only working on the things that haven't received any attention at all.
Correct, yeah.
You betcha. And I'll do sort of annoying scrolls so you don't have to say, move, move, I'll just slowly move. That was a um. Yeah, it's, it's, it's generally a policy statement to memorialize the general intent and goals of the council that is to handle um, disputes internally first whenever possible.
Right. Yes, team, that's, that's kind of what I was getting at earlier. I, I want us to have a, um, everybody have a good faith effort. Effort to resolve an issue directly. Um, as opposed to going to a third party or whatever. That's, to me, that's just.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, yeah. But it'd just be kind of a courteous.
It would. Cause I think a lot of times, there, it's a misinterpretation or miscommunication. Somebody may not know of certain things and once you bring it to their light, they understand it and they can move forward.
Right. Like. I mean, we're human.
We're gonna say, good faith is a tangible conversation at the beginning, or are we gonna say good faith is irregardless?
Sure, we can split hairs all day, all along on that. Good faith and. Yep. And the big thing I like is um, involving the city manager, city attorney, human resources, especially like my whole goal with this and, and my thinking was that if we do have a problem with a staff member, i.e. the only person we direct is um, the city manager, then we go through their proper channels. The first thing has got to go to human, humans resources now that we have a director. And then they go through the employee committee and we go forth like that. That's, to me, that's the standard operating procedure. That's what we do at the state of Oregon. That's what I've seen anyplace else. If I have a problem, I, I go directly to HR. That or, or at least have a conversation first.
Yeah, so my question would be. If Darren's got a complaint against Dave. If Darren's got a complaint against Dave. He needs to report that to a person who worked under Dave?
No, doesn't matter, H R's H R, H R's a uh different thing, he, they follow them to their own guidelines. They have a certificate.
Is not even directed by Dave?
No, he's directed by Melissa, he's directed by me.
So it's still.
It's it's.
But but you're likely, well, and as the city grows, so right now, H R is a division of the admin services. Finance and admin services department. In probably three years or less, H R will be its own department, it'll have its own director, it'll have its own, it'll have a director and then an analyst. Most likely. Um, and so, yeah, so this is an interesting uh topic for discussion. I mean, generally speaking, H R is going to be the department to take it, and then they're gonna process. And so, in this case, your procedure is to take it to the personnel uh committee, so they're supposed to take that information. Organize it in such a way and get it to the personnel committee. Um, if you want to come up with another procedure to do that, you certainly can.
My concern is submitted to. Right, so John or H R person.
H R manager.
H R manager, right? He works under you. Not directly, but.
Sure.
So for me, that creates a, I feel like complaints should be brought to the council, if they're directing a city and their staff. They should not go up there because he's your full.
I disagree.
No, he's just, he's.
I disagree, so let me ask you hypothetically, somebody has a problem with your mom who's a superintendent of school, what's, how does that work? Correct, it doesn't go to H R at all? Really? I don't, I don't find this.
We need to involve us, we need to go to ourself anyway to have. That's that's a process.
Yeah, I.
Why would we have, so like, so for example, the H R director, this is right, he does. Josie works under my mom, my mom directs her. You how, that would be completely not okay, I did my pay, I don't want to look into these issues, they can direct that staff.
No, you can't, that's unethical, and that violates their their code of conduct for an employee.
Exactly, but the the.
I I can't get there, I don't have that suspicious mind, I don't, I don't work in that area, I I don't, so. And now we're not, we're here to. I I I don't, I don't see it.
I think this is a valuable conversation to have, I do just wanna have a a point of clarification um. When I, and I and I brought this up with David a little bit earlier when we were preparing for the meeting. Um, as drafted right now, chapter ten talks about policies and procedures for elected officials to address complaints against. Fellow elected officials, but that hasn't been the discussion that we've had thus far in chapter ten.
Got you, we haven't got yet to the city manager.
We haven't backed on the city manager, got me, yeah.
But I think, I do think that the questions that you're raising, they're tight in um in the practice of elected officials around. Um, assistance from the city employees is. You know, that's something to, something to think through, I'm not necessarily, you know. These policies and procedures for addressing these types of complaints, they they weren't part of the LOC's model rules. Um, so take a little bit more more digging and probably um be valuable to do some consultation with. An employment attorney um to identify what's gonna be the most proper approach. I mean, one of the things I will point out that I I I like about the language here in reference to the questions you're raising is that it was. It's saying requesting assistance or facilitation from staff, um which is slightly different than saying I'm. Taking the complaint to you to handle, um but that probably does need to be clarified a little bit more. What I think could be useful here, then these procedures in particular feel like ones that um. Would be benefited through some review by.
I totally agree.
Um, and so, you know, in terms of like additional review and conversation, maybe making. Some comment bubbles.
So.
To identify what are the pieces that people still have problems with around, so like for the.
So right now, let's hear is just the elected official to elected official, we don't have. Cause our company, we recall from our hard issues before, we're gonna draft this, which we we've now done, and the idea was to take this and. Not carbon copy, but essentially take carbon copy and modify it specifically for the city manager, we haven't done that yet. That's one of the things we were looking to try to do here, uh either tonight or at another time, or if you wanted to have. Employment attorney look at what we've done for the council and say, can you take from here and come up with what you think might be appropriate for?
I'm wondering if that might be the best route, but the things that we wanna make sure that we have established tonight before this all goes to like the final legal review. Is confirming that you do wanna have a statement of policy. That matters of concerning conduct or have are handled internally wherever possible first. Sounds like people are on the same page there, right? Um, and that the purpose is to establish a coherent process. And that there's gonna be both an informal and a formal process. And where a lot of the questions lie is around, how can we properly include. City employees in the facilitation of the process. Um, particularly in situations where the complaint is being brought against the city manager. And those are the questions that need to be considered on legal review, is that accurate?
That's exactly, my my concern is a broken, like comes up from public staff, anybody. And it goes, okay, perfect, it's gonna go to an employee underneath Dave.
Yeah.
That can get stomped out.
Yeah.
Relatively. That's not saying that Dave is doing, one very clear, because that creates an opportunity for a fair pro quo. Or any other right in situations of, no, you're not gonna act upon the mindset of opposing me. You hope you like the job.
Yeah.
And the council have no oversight on that, never know about it, so they could never hit a complaint that would ever reach the city council.
So, so then, yeah, so my, and I hear you. So, yeah, so then my recommendation would be, yeah, just put it, put a note um. For legal review by employment council, um. Uh, priority questions are how to translate this process. For complaints against city manager. And how to ensure that process does not create. Um. Negative incentives or problems related to. Use of city staff resources. In helping to process the complaint. Sounds alright?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I didn't only get scrolled through here, we're still reading. Again, this is elected official. Uh, complaint first, uh with a lot, another elected official.
I'm, I can turn it to appropriate city, so like, I think I should say legal counsel. Um, because.
Where are you at, man?
I'm sorry, I'm.
B one.
B one, that says within five business days, mayor um or council president, in consultation. Appropriate city staff. Um, should provide a response, so my concern is, I don't know, like this is my concern, like if I get an email. What happened, I get a complaint about, let's say Nancy. And I go.
Again, this is council, this is elected official, elected official, okay.
I go, okay. The attorney, who is that individual? Because I am not equipped to go, oh, Karin, good to know, I'm gonna call. Was Nancy, I don't know, you know, you did go to a person, I think I should go to legal counsel, legal counsel go, this needs to go to person. John, Dave, whomever, but that creates a level of conversation occurring, going, I don't know. And then enable us to directly look at the council office.
Why would it go to legal counsel instead of to me?
Yeah.
Cause I work with you.
Yeah, she had a complaint against you, but we just go. That's what I'm asking. I I I don't.
And cause like, like, like if you came to me, I would come, so for example, if this were in place today, you had a complaint against Corinne. You'd come to me and say, I'm really concerned about Corinne, my first step would be, have you done step two? Have you brought it to her attention yet, have you guys had this conversation?
Yeah, that's the first one, he should come to me.
Right.
So that that's the question.
And then, and if you say, yeah, I've talked to her, I am not satisfied with. I'm not satisfied with the response, miss fun, no fun.
So. And so.
So really, through the mix, I would get it, and I would go, okay, here you go, Dave. But my, I I don't know, my type of pressure is, I feel like to me, that elevates it to, this is no longer within. Answer a question, me and you can answer, I feel like that is to go to legal counsel, and then they say, hey, you should give this to me, this is.
Well, that's what I, so where I'm getting at, where I was going next with that is, um. I I'm gonna then take. At this point, I'm I'm invol- I've now involved in the facilitation of this, working with you as your direct staff. And I'm going to take advantage of the resources that are available to do that, that's going to be legal counsel. Um, that may be C I S, even though it's not an employment related thing, it certainly goes to our. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have that review just because of our uh risks and liabilities that that may or may not be associated with that. And um so that, I mean, to me, I think the the appropriate staff is probably me, and and unless the I'm. The content, and this right now is talking about elected official, elected official, and then I, and then it's on, it's on me to. Coordinate and get the right resources to address the issue.
So Dave, this goes, this is.
So then that could turn into, then that could turn into a follow-up complaint, I don't like what Dave did, it's like now you gotta complain against Dave, no problem.
So I don't want this to turn into a.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's what I'm here for, I mean, if I, if if it turns into a complaint against Dave, I mean, I know what I signed up for. And then now, now I'm dealing with that complaint. I I I I would, um, I mean, I don't have a problem with if if it's the desire of the council to work directly with the attorney, that's, that's fine. But I will say that if I don't know that there's rifts or wedges between you, that's difficult for me. I need to be aware of issues that are out there as well, so I would, I would say if if the desire is to work directly with the attorney, no problem. But I need to be part of that in some way.
Yeah, I completely agree, I think that it needs to have, first of all, we need to have a one-to-one conversation, hey, look. Did that council go to that other council member and say, hey, look, I got a problem, let's have a discussion. And then after that, if it's doesn't, if it doesn't uh, if it doesn't that, i- if it doesn't resolve itself. You know, then we get the mayor involved, and we have a mediation so for so on, that's, and. And that's kinda what I'm seeing, right, within five days, business days, we're receiving the complaint, the mayor and or president in constitution with the appropriate. In consultation with appropriate city staff, so that shows to me that we get a hold of of the city. Um, that would be, uh, would you say appropriate city staff or?
That's what I'm asking.
That would be, it should be Dave, it should be the city manager, not necessarily Dave, but that position.
Yeah.
No, it needs to say Dave, rather call him.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I think that this is a helpful conversation for, and this may be something where, since we've already discussed, we're gonna kind of. Cut this through and and.
I'll I'll add an additional comment here just to kinda.
Like highlight appropriate city staff and put a, put a comment of. City manager question mark, legal counsel question mark. What about situations where the city manager is just.
Yeah, my whole thing is, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get to a case where every five minutes, we're talking to the city attorney about every little thing, that's. That's ridiculous, if we can't, as adults, cause I, we're all adults, if we can't have a conversation and reach some kinda compromise, then, no. That's a bunch of crap.
And ensuring that your city manager has a line of sight for all of the two, through to the kind of disagreements and rifts, I think is a. So if you're gonna have these, I mean, these are very, very detailed procedures, and that's one of the things that I. Add on a further review is, on the one hand, detailed procedures can be really, really, really helpful, especially in like. Times of struggle because they temper, you know, they like give everybody shared expectations. But there can also be some challenges with making the procedures, procedures too specific, so that's gonna. Thinking through this very carefully, but the important part is making sure that like the initial proposal that you have of the procedures. Actually fulfills your intent, right? That you've expressed your intent clearly, and then we can go back and see like, okay, where does that intent work and where does it need to be adjusted?
So on section four. Um, the response, sorry, the last sentence there is not permitted to have legal representation unless otherwise provided in such allowances for the description. Why not?
So we've actually consulted with the league of Oregon cities on that specifically, and they haven't asked us. They they have recommended that you do not allow people to bring in legal counsel, cause it's a, it's not a legal proceeding, it is. Simply a complaint resolution, it's the same if it were. On um, in a employment world, you can bring people in, and you can, you're asking them questions, they don't have the right to their attorney there either. That it's not, you're not, you're not Miranda Wright, you're not under arrest, you're not in criminal violation, and you don't have legal counsel. So that that was uh one that was specifically highlighted in the league, it told us, I would not allow that, in fact, I would specifically outline that. That is specifically said not to permit.
And that makes sense that um resolution, um that all looks fine. Well, Kayden, I hate today, there's a lot of people smarter than us gives us information, so I'm gonna go with what they say.
But I didn't see that, the conversation, I'm curious, what was the context? Cause if it's in the comments, if it's in our judicial role, then I would, you get it, but it's a due process situation, you agree with it?
I don't think that this would be a quasi. No, I don't think this would be a quasi judicial role.
Not yet.
Not yet, because we're talking about.
It's the front of the horse, not the back of the horse.
Then just our action or center is considered, would that be. Because.
Yeah.
Um, I don't believe that that would be a closet, I mean, I have to think about that a little bit more, even if you're dating to a point of center, I don't believe. That that would be a quasi judicial rule because that is. You're not. You're, because what you're doing in a center environment is addressing the management of your own. Um, processes as a city council.
Correct.
Um, I mean, it's a question to think through more carefully. Um, but I do not believe that you would be in a quasi judicial role in this space. But again, this is another reason why I think it's valuable to have this conversation and have all of these different questions flagged, so that they can be appropriately addressed. When everything is reviewed as a whole.
Wanna make sure I give you, play a tag and keep reading, let me know if you wanna scroll up.
Please. And have you looked over most of this stuff, ma'am?
Um, I, I have to say that, uh, chapter 10 is, these provisions are probably the ones that I looked at, best closely in preparation for this meeting, partially because I was not anticipating them being discussed since they were part of the, um, provisions that you'd already worked through. Um, but also because on an initial read, my, the first thought that came to my mind was, these are gonna require very careful scrutiny. And so just from a time management standpoint, I focused on preparing to discuss, the matters that, you hadn't addressed yet.
So another follow-up question here. So we have councilwoman, councilmember, councilmember of staff, who have staffed the councilman.
That's what we had talked about creation here. So we had worked just on this one, and those are the two that were, uh, remaining councilmember to staff and city manager. If I had any concerns about council. Any elected official?
Yeah, my recommendations that we ask, that's good to really go over this is find two to come. I think she gets, you have the premise of what we're, what we're trying to do.
To appropriate use of staff, appropriate conversations with staff, providing for appropriate due process. Is that, is this a quasi judicial role or not? I think that covers most of the questions that have come up. Yeah. If it is a quasi judicial role, how does that affect the due process questions, et cetera? Yeah.
All right, are we on to chapter 11?
One to chapter.
So. Currently, the way that yours, uh, policies are set up is, uh, completed by the first quarter of every odd numbered year. And we did that, cause there's an election every two years. And so these will be the rules that'll manage you, the, the, the group that's gonna work together for two years. It's gonna be there. Um, but it doesn't really give you the opportunity to make any amendments outside of that. Um, at least it's quiet on it. It doesn't forbid it. It just is quiet on it. So, the LOC's proposals here basically just says that you can amend these as needed. I'm paraphrasing.
I think so.
Yeah. I do think that there's a value in every other year, at least doing a formal review. So, but I, what I, what I don't, think is valuable is if at some time in eight months into it, s- something is determined to be either not applying with the state constitution, the charter, or, is otherwise prohibited or, uh, you know, difficult for whatever reason that you don't want, you should be able to amend that at that time because you've identified it as a suppressing issue.
At least it triggers that every second year we'll be looking at.
Yeah, it's for review, I think. So for me, I would, I would put in the D, um, even though it's amendment, I would just put in a provision here that is what we have on our existing rules that, in the first quarter of every odd numbered year, these shall be, reviewed.
Can we change section D if the reason is too long? Section repeal, says repeal or replacement. Three days seems excessive. There's always a way in three days.
I was actually somewhat can, you know, raise a question here as well, just because the idea of, the difference between the amendment to a rule and a repeal and replacement under rule, can sometimes be very difficult to parse. And I don't think we want to have that kind of confusion in our roles.
Yeah, so for me, I, the way I like to do this, so these are adopted by resolution. And so, what I'd like to be able to do is when they pass a resolution, um, that it's going to specifically say that this resolution, these newly, these amended rules, replace the entire set of rules. But we can put that language in here if you wanna do it that way, or just to make it more clear, but.
I think that could be helpful to make it more clear that that's what is anticipated by replacement. This is something I've seen come up in other contexts where people just end up, when they see, well, we can amend a rule or we can repeal and replace a rule, what's the difference? And so I think having some clarity there that when we're talking about repeal and replacement, we're talking about repeal and replacement, like, of the rules via res- we're, yeah, repealing the whole thing and replacing a new one via resolution. And then your question, your side was around the, why is it that the replacement, not to went to effect to twelve thirty days after replacement was approved? I don't know for sure, but my guess would be that the intent, if, if the intent of this is really kind of talking about, what David was talking about, uh, and what we're doing now, like we're ultimately gonna repeal the whole book and replace it with a whole new book. Waiting for the new book to go into effect until thirty days after the replacement was approved, gives people enough time to read the new book and familiarize themselves with it and understand what the new rules and day mark before they go into effect. That would be my guess as to why that is there.
My question. Is. Andrew, do you have a question? This is helpful. Thanks. So I can sort of, I'm gonna replace it. So those, if the full credence is as well, you're still in place for three days. So if, if something wrong with it for thirty days, we can get that.
So this is the point that I was raising about why it would be important to add a few words to explain the clarity between, an amendment and a repeal and replace. So if, the issue is, you're in the middle of the two years cycle, say we, say we finalize this whole process. We adopt these rules, they go into effect four months from now. We realize we missed something in legal review and there's actually a provision of your rules that directly contradicts your charter. We can amend and it's like one provision. Then there is an amendment process for amending that one provision. And, under the LOC's proposal, that amended rule would go into effect.
Two weeks for us, the next meeting.
The next meeting after the rule was, right? So you amend at this meeting, it's on next. So that's the amended scenario. What I'm understanding the repeal and replacement scenario would be is more of what we're doing right now. We have the old book of rules. We're going through this workshop process to completely revise the entire book. And then the new book gets adopted. We're gonna wait for that new book to actually become effective until thirty days after passage. So people have a chance to read and understand it before it becomes the, before those become the rules. So for those thirty days in between, the old rules will still be effective, right? So if you have like one or two council meetings in between, the old rules are still effective. You're all used to those. You understand how they work. Um, but in the meantime, you're familiarizing yourself with the new rules and then on that thirty days, the new one's still into effect.
I get that. Why not, if we are, we're, there's like, for example, funny vibe about it, the, you have to, it's illegal. Or it's against our charter. Is it, why would we still continue the process who was against our charter?
I, I believe that I answered that question, but just to, um, I mean, you can, you can as a council determine that it three days is too long. But, uh, again, um, I think what this is contemplating here is that there are kind of, there are two separate costs for that circumstance. If you find something that's illegal, you can handle that. Yeah. And if it's illegal amendment, it will go into effect at your next council meeting. Yeah.
We won't.
Any changes or we like it?
Um, yeah, the only, the only change that I, and I'm not sure what, how to do the language, but something in the repeal section that just,
Yeah.
better clarifies exactly what repeal and replacement means. And I'm not thinking of the right text for it right now. Um.
Just. Go.
We can add a section D, uh, repeal and placement. Well, even, even amendments are gonna be done by resolution as well, so.
So the process that David and I discussed, um, before we sat down for this meeting today would be that now that, um, you all, uh, as a council have done a once-over of the entire book of policies and procedures. I will get an updated copy that has all of the changes that were made today, both in this kind of highlighted red line version and a clean copy. Um, and do a full, do a full legal review of the whole thing, uh, which could take some time. I have started a little bit. Like done like a very quick once-over and started trying to have a few things that I had questions about. Um, but then what will come back to you is a red line document that as, as long as this works for all of you, the thought process is what will come back to you is a red line document that does not have the highlighting, that's in the version today, right? So he'll send me a clean copy without the highlighting. I'll do a red line of that with recommended changes and, um, comments noting why I think the change is recommended. Or if there's an area where I feel like you could, you know, use some more clarity or that sort of thing, I'll post questions to you. And then, uh, you'll probably need to have another workshop meeting to work through all of those questions, uh, before it's ready to be, finalized and, and voted. Uh, it, it, does that, do you feel like that's properly? Um, David, is that aligned with what we talked about earlier?
Yeah, it does. The only thing we had left is, uh, we were gonna do a review of sort of your existing policies and see if there's anything that, is in there that's not in this that you still want to carry forward. Um, it's entirely up to you. Obviously, we're, we, we're not, you've still got more work to do. So, you wanna stick around for another thirty minutes? We can get started. Or if you said this is a good stopping point, we can, do that. What I can do, if it's helpful in between that time, which I kinda started already, is, um, anything that is already sort of in this updated proposal, the mostly blue proposal, um, I can take your existing stuff and, essentially just pull that completely out and then sort of leave you, here's your leftover policy. Is there any leftover? Do you wanna, you wanna have leftovers tomorrow? You wanna put it into your new policy? You want any of the leftovers? Okay. But is that sound, does that sound a good way to organize it? I can provide you sort of the leftovers document. I don't know what else to call that. And I'll just give you the leftovers document. You guys can go through that and see if you want it to carry forward or not. Provisions not included.
The leftovers sounds great. Other than, we probably need to consider whether, if we're just looking at leftovers, do we run the risk of finding something out of context?
Right. I, I would prefer to get the one, um, that you kind of go over and then we work from there. Personally.
No, that's great.
Cause I'll get confused.
Yeah.
I'm not real smart.
Ooh, many parts by his name. It's a little Aladdin. Watching a lot of Disney these days.
So I think I'll say, um, if that's the approach we're gonna take, it'll be helpful to me to get the leftovers document at the same time that, for review, so that when I'm doing that initial review, I'm also looking at the leftovers as well and can be able to, come to then the meeting where we go over the red line and the leftovers, prepared to be able to say like, these are the leftovers that can go in without causing problems over there, right?
Okay.
Um, and these are the ones that can't, or these are the ones that I think are already covered, or that sort of.
That's kind of what I was getting at. It'll confuse me.
I, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see leftovers, um, but I fully understand I'll confuse myself. I'm, I'm really, you know, I've been waiting for the, you know, the review document, but I'd like to see the leftovers.
Yeah, well. My thought.
Uh, you know, when, when, when David can get it prepared, I.
Well, I think the proposal here is like, I could, I could send it over to legal and they can actually have this sort of this first blush. And then we can kind of send you leftovers and say, these don't have, constitution, charter, or other conflicts. These ones are just, uh, still available for consideration if you want to consider it.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Very, okay, perfect.
Okay.
They're just things that you used to have.
Things that you used to have. Used to date that person in high school? Do you still wanna have your friends on Facebook?
No. That's fast.
Question for tonight, there's no text.
I learned something here today. Yeah.
Yeah. What about, uh?
No texting and it's like, you know.
Carrier pigeons.
No carrier pigeons.
No. Uh, in, in enemy interception, huh? Oh, gosh dang. Gotta go figure out a new strategy again.
That's kind of scary.
You guys realize that like it took me five years and nine months to write the constitution. It was fifty-five people. You imagine us trying to write the constitution?
You know, if you don't like the smell of my coffee, we don't.
And they were in their like twenties and thirties.
Yeah. Yeah. That'd be awkward. Cause I only get one call a month. All right, um, you still have on your agenda goals? Um, do you want to cancel that? Do you wanna table that for another, or do you want to tackle that initially? Or do you want to table that for a next, a next workshop? I will say your goals are currently adopted through June of this year. So they only have five weeks left. Um, that doesn't mean that we can, need to work off of what we have until we have something new.
Ritz seven thirty. I'd say we table it.
But I hear a table, I hear table.
Table.
Table. And this time we're looking for a motion to table six point one to a different workshop or six point two.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion, we table six point two to another future workshop.
Thank you, sir. We're looking for a second.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. We can walk on.
Counselor Feinerberg.
Hi.
Counselor Dufflock.
Hi.
Counselor Katie McMillan.
Hi.
Counselor Dennis McMillan.
Hi.
Counselor McLean.
Hi.
Yes, how does it?
Katie, set your next workshop.
Well, it's between, uh, just in the agenda. So, uh, just for our workshop dates, what do you have got? Everyone play our favorite game, open your calendar.
Where's my calendar, Nancy?
I can't answer that. Our city manager.
Dave.
Our city managers.
You'll be here for the June seventeenth day?
I'll be here, I'm Nate Mountain.
Okay.
That was one of, and I'm being on board, but I will change hiking dates by one day.
Okay. All right. Appreciate it.
Oh, not being a steel bit, but actually.
All right.
Yeah, but I'll be in Portland for a little bit. Fine. In second, so Darren got the ship on June third.
Lord help us all.
I'm sure. I can do any afternoon on the week of Wednesday night. I can do, uh, on, uh.
June twelfth?
So I can do, so. I, I, I won't be here on the twelfth. I don't.
You should be.
I should, I think I should be here, but yeah. Uh, I'm available.
It's Juneteenth.
It's not, it's a floating holiday for staff, so the city hall is open.
Yeah.
We'll be out.
I'm off. Stay won't let me go to work. You can't have that then.
I'm still finding flowers on the.
Mom was open to pay the holidays.
Um, the twenty-sixth?
I'm sorry, did, was, was nine, was the ninth or the eleventh not a good day?
I can do the. I can do the ninth. I can do the ninth or the eleventh.
I should be able to, yeah. I should be able to, yeah, looks like it's okay.
Yep.
Ninth is great, we're in training on the eleventh.
I'm in there?
Yes.
Oh, you're right, that's the sale, yep, you're right.
What is it?
So the ninth.
The ninth.
Ninth, June ninth.
Wow.
Can we, can we do it everybody?
What's the earliest time folks are available?
I can do it.
Yeah, I could probably look down here at three.
I mean, we, I don't wanna do any evening appointments, mine too, but I, we all seem a little bit more chipper when the sun is out rather than when the moon is hanging out.
They're probably three.
Three o'clock?
Three's good for me.
Okay, at this time, council, I'm currently looking.
Well, I was, I, I, I have three available at my calendar right now, but that is, uh, unpredictable time, so.
Do you have enough time to do what we need?
To be done by the night?
That is a very good question, that's gonna be a tight timeframe.
So should we go further, or we can't?
Goal setting on the ninth.
Yeah.
For like an hour and a half at three, and you're done at four thirty, and she doesn't have to be moved.
That's true, I, I agree with that, yeah.
We'll close in the night for goal setting, and then let's reconvene after lawyer's recommendation for, once she's done, we can set a future date.
Yeah, that'll work.
For the table on the night twenty two.
If that works for people, that would be.
And you'll have your council meeting on the seventeenth, and so we can have a regular agenda, and there's, uh, for a few minutes, just to figure out that.
Okay, so looking for a motion for goal setting on June ninth.
Man, let it make a motion, oh. To, uh, um, set June ninth, twenty twenty five, three P M for goal setting agenda.
Thank you for your motion, we give a second to motion, please. Thank you for seconding my motion, you're welcome.
Counselor Funderburke.
Hi.
Counselor Dufflock.
Hi.
Counselor Katie McMillan, Counselor Dennis McMillan.
Hi.
Counselor McLean.
Hi.
I have it moving forward, um, to.
There's like one quick request on the goal setting, so if you could take a look, I think I sent that to you again, and then I can send it to you again to the word document. Um, if there's anything in there that you feel is, uh, no, it, it just, it, as, as it comes, if you email that to me, that way I can send out sort of, this is what I've received, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna edit anything you said other than, here was a note received that said no, here's a note that said please add so that we, we could have a little bit of, uh, just a little bit of prep time, don't need it a whole lot before, like, if you, if you got it to you by noon the Friday before, that would probably plenty of time, I'm literally just gonna copy those things and then just send it out to you, take a look at it, so we can meet up that Monday, that way there's just a time to remedial the weekend.
Can you send it out again?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, not a problem.
When did you send it out?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Or was it the same when you sent this one out?
I think it was, I think it was with these, with the last one, but I don't mind sending it again.
Okay, can, we need a motion for tableing for nine point, or six point two, or we could just have.
It was tabled at a future workshop.
Yeah, you don't need to set the, when the future is, so yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll coordinate.
Man, let's make a motion during the meeting.
Your motion, three seconds to motion, please, I'll pick it back.
Counselor Funderburke.
Hi.
Counselor Dufflock.
Hi.
Counselor Katie McMillan, Counselor Dennis McMillan.
Hi.
Counselor McLean.
Hi.
We have meeting adjourned?
Meeting adjourned, we appreciate it.